Okay, we are live.
Okay, Sue, are you ready?
I am.
Okay, let's call to order the meeting for the Planning Commission, June 24th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wolke.
Here.
Mayor. Mayor Oda.
Here.
Mrs. Erlich.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Cappers.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, we have our minutes of June 10, 2020. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? I've got a couple. So if you take a look on page three.
Yes.
First discussion matter, this is concerning the demolition about midway through, there's a sentence that says, "With the retirement more than a year ago, however, he and Mr. McGraw do have a shared interest in a property and two bicycles." The bicycles are the property, so I respectfully request to delete the words "property and," so it says "in two bicycles."
Okay.
Then, the last thing I have, Ed, you made the motion to, I thought it was, to approve the demolition. Wasn't that your motion?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, I need to read, was to take, to take the action of moving forward with the demo, yes.
Okay, there's a lot of other stuff there that I know you didn't say, and I'm certain that if somebody caught this on YouTube, they would notice that it wasn't said. All the bullet points, and I understand the reason for having it there is to pretty up the record. However, this was such a hot topic, I think we better stay with just the fact that you moved to approve the demolition of the residence and the garage structure as applied for, and leave it at that. I don't put words in your mouth, but.
Yeah.
Oh, you saying all the rest of this stuff.
Yeah, I'm trying to find this, what page are you looking directly at, Al?
It's on page. Bottom of page five of this packet.
It's the bottom of the minutes from the last meeting.
That's last.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so it's a, it is a certificate of appropriateness, not a positive.
Yes.
Positiveness, or whatever that was, I don't even know what that word means.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, Al. I think you're right, I mean, I didn't, I guess, say every word of that, I just, I moved for the motion to support the demo.
Okay, does anybody else have any changes to the minutes?
I will move to approve with amendments.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 opposed?
The second of the most, please.
Mr. Wolke made the second.
Thank you.
Okay, having that getting out of the way. I do want to ask staff concerning the demolition, while we're still on that subject, is there a mechanism on the demolition of these buildings? This one in particular, since there was brought to our attention that there's asbestos and lead-based paint for the monitoring of those things, so that when they demolish this, that it's not left up into the air, doesn't contaminate the neighboring properties and things like that. Are we, I'm concerned about that, but is the city do anything about that?
Yeah, so when we issued the permit, they have, all the application itself, that you have to follow the rules and regulations of the city and the Miami County Health District requirements, so I believe, I'm not certain, 100% certain, but I believe they have to have a hose on site when they're demolishing to keep the dust to a minimum, although it's a single-family structure, not a commercial structure, there's not a whole lot of regulations on that, as if it were a commercial structure.
But are those health requirements or the health?
Those are health district requirements, but we do ask that they follow the health district requirements.
All right.
We don't ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda then is the historic district application for 25 South Elm Street. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir, we do. The application is for 25 South Plum Street. The applicant MVP 619 Lincoln is requesting the planning commission to review their exterior renovations and modifications for that building. This property is on B3 Central Business District. The OHI form lists the property as being constructed in 1910 with a rough-faced concrete block with recessed entry, large central bay openings, and a crenellated parapet. This building has been altered with new windows. Again, this property is B3 Business District, it is not on the National Register. The planning commission did approve the DRO application used for this, so you have seen this property here recently. The applicant is requesting multiple modifications for your consideration. Those include to block in several window openings and door openings around the facade of the building. This is in part for the renovations of the property, converting it over to apartments. The proposed openings to be closed have been provided in the attachments in your packet. The replacement of existing modern bronze vinyl windows with new white vinyl windows. This will include removing lower-level glass block windows that are foundation or ground level for the basement area, and that will be changed out with white vinyl egress windows. The painting of the entire building, in your packet, there are the paint swatches provided. Those colors are Sherwin-Williams colors. SW 916310 Lizzie will be used to paint the body of the building, the walls. The trim will be matched with the windows, and that's Sherwin-Williams 7005 Pure White. And the entry doors will be Sherwin-Williams 2839, the Roycroft Copper Red. Again, those colors are attached. The applicant is also requesting the addition of two new air conditioning units to be installed at the rear of the building. In talking with the applicant, they will be screened with shrubbery, as according to our ordinances, and that, that will screen the view of those units from the Cherry Street lot. And the final request is for the installation of brushed aluminum stud-mounted six-inch letters for their address on the front of the building facing South Plum Street, and it will essentially have the address 25 Plum Street. The panel that is currently there, they're going to reuse that, it's a three-by-four panel, equaling 12 square feet total of space. Staff recommends approval for these proposed alterations based that the alterations are in keeping with the historic nature of the building and the district. Proposed modifications are appropriate for the building and will maintain the visual relationship of the streetscape, and the alterations do not alter any of the historical art or architectural features of this building.
Any questions of staff?
I have one question.
Mr. McGary?
If I'm reading this correct, the windows on the, facing the Plum Street side are going to be changed out from, just in color only, but we're not blocking any of those in?
No, sir, the only windows that are being blocked in, there's some around each side of the building facing the neighboring properties, and a door, and I believe two windows on the rear, and again, those are just to provide more square footage. I think some of the bathrooms will be in those areas, so they don't.
Yeah, no, okay, good. That's what, that's what I thought. I kind of like that door in the back, though, that's kind of handy.
One of the questions I have, you've given us a good projection of what the color is going to be for the windows, but I don't see a masonry sample. This building is very unusual, in my opinion, in the type of block that is used, and I would like to retain that. Filling in those other window areas or the door area with just simple concrete block, I think, would make it look bad, for a simple phrase. Did they give you a sample of concrete block that they were going to use?
They did not, but they did mention that they're going to try and obtain a split-faced block to mirror what's currently there. They, they do understand, they don't, you don't want a smooth-faced concrete block installed next to that, that rough face, and giving that contrast or difference in appearance. So they are trying to obtain some, some block that matches this. If they can't, they'll go with a rough face that's similar in style.
That's nowhere in the application that I see. The type of block, just concrete block.
Correct. I had a side conversation with the applicant after they submitted all the documentation to clarify the window styles, and again, the screening and placement of the air conditioning units, and the concrete block came up in that as well.
Whatever action we take today, I would hope that whoever made a motion to approve that would include that concern, that we have rough-faced concrete block as a part of the requirement. And any other questions of staff on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve on the condition that the, where the windows are blocked in, that a similar material will be used as is, as is existing throughout the building.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any further discussion?
So, Mr. Wolke, you're talking about the windows and the door, not just the windows? That would be blocked off, right? I think you froze up.
Larry, are you there?
Well, we may have to wait for Larry.
Oh, Larry.
New house, new Wi-Fi.
Did he move into a new house?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Are you there, Larry, or? He may hear us, though.
Larry, we can't hear you. If you can hear us, say something.
Blink.
Can you type into the chat?
Nobody has.
Now he just went out, maybe he's going to come back up. Mr. Wolke, are you back on? Oh, now that's. He's supposed to have video, he even lost video. Somebody needs to call him.
Right.
He had video.
Is that his phone?
I think that was.
Well, it's coming in and out.
He can.
Yeah.
Hi, we've lost you, could you try to come back in? We don't have you.
Okay, I'll start all over, but.
There you are.
I can see me, but everybody else was frozen on my computer.
Okay.
Go out and then start all over again.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you. They lost you.
Okay, here he comes. Am I back? Yes, we don't have any video for you, but we hear you. Okay, it just shows my name on my screen, too.
Did you click the videos?
Stop video at the bottom left.
Bottom left, there you go.
There you go.
Okay, hurry up, do it again.
Larry, just, you, you made a motion to go ahead and approve the application with the condition that the block be basically the same as the surrounding walls of that area, that the windows were to be filled in, but there's also a request to fill in a door. Was that part of your motion as well?
Yes.
Okay. Having that clarification, Sue, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next matter is a historic district application for 120 South Plum Street for painting of a residence. Staff have a report?
Yes, sir. The applicants, which are the owners, the vacuums, are requesting the commission to review their painting modification for their property at 120 South Plum Street. This property is on R5, single-family residential. OHI form lists the property as being constructed in 1853 with Greek Revival influence. Home is a significant contributor to the historic district in the residential area immediately adjacent, and is adjacent to the central commercial core. This property is not on the National Historic Registry. The applicants were previously approved to paint their shutters a dark green or deep emerald, which is a dark green color. Prior to that, the shutters were a faded-out green. The applicants, since doing their restoration work on the original wood shutters, have decided to come back and actually apply to see your approval on their proposed color, which is Pittsburgh Paints PPG 1040-7, or the color called Goblin, which is a gray, slate gray style color. As again, they will, they have finished up their maintenance on these shutters, and they will be repainting them and reinstalling them. And staff does recommend this approval based on the alterations, again, are in keeping with the historic nature of the district. Proposed paint scheme is appropriate for the style of the building, will maintain the visual relationship of the streetscape, and this alteration does not alter any of the historic or architectural features of the property.
Any questions of staff?
Move for approval?
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Dennis.
Okay, next matter, historic district application for 126 South Plum Street, the installation of additional vinyl fencing. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. The neighboring property to the previous application is the Feltners' residence or the Deneas' residence. They're seeking the planning commission's approval for the installation of additional fence panels for their property at 126 South Plum Street. The property is owned R5, single-family residence, residential, and is located in the block of South Plum between West Canal and West Franklin Streets. OHI form describes the property as being built around 1911, it's a two-and-a-half-story frame vernacular design in a smaller urban setting, closely spaced buildings. This property is also not listed on the National Registry. The applicants are proposing a modification, again, of their previously approved application of installing a white vinyl fence along their property line between them and their neighbor. They've asked to extend the fence from the previously approved application forward towards Plum Street in between the two residences. They will be stopping at the front corner wall of the homes. That way, the front porch is, and the streetscape is not affected. And this will, again, be white vinyl fence matching the exact same previously approved fencing that the planning commission approved previously. Staff does recommend approval of the fence modification since the modifications do meet the City of Troy requirements, and the modifications will not distract from the historic integrity of the building or surrounding properties.
Any questions of staff?
Are they removing all of the shrubs, or just from where the fence ends?
They're going to, they're working with the neighbor next door to at least trim most of the shrubs back. They're going to remove some of the shrubs where the fence panel is going to be installed. The neighbor next door may remove more shrubs and actually apply for a future fence permit for their property.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Is this neighboring the house that we just approved, the paint colors on?
Yes, ma'am, right next door.
Oh, yeah. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next we have another historic district application, this one for 133, 135 South Oxford Street for the roof. Staff have a report?
Yes, sir, we do. The applicant, which is BSF Investments, LTD, and DNS Construction, their contractor, is asking the planning commission to review their roof replacement of the residence at 133 and 135 South Oxford Street. This property is owned R5, single-family residential. The OHI form lists this property as being constructed in 1910, two-story vernacular frame, two-family structure with plain window caps, dual central entrances, and a porch across the front. Again, this property is not on the National Historic Registry. The applicant is replacing, request replacement of the existing shingle roof of the residence and garage due to the tornado damage back in January. After making contact with the property owner for property maintenance, we requested that they apply for historic approval to make these modifications. The applicant is requesting that the existing shingle roof, which is a gray-colored diamond-cut style of asphalt shingle on the main structure of the home, along with a small section off the back of the house, which has a green three-tab asphalt shingle-style roof, and the garage, which has a three-tab asphalt shingle roof in gray. The applicant is planning on using Owens Corning Duration shingles, which are an architectural-style asphalt shingle in the color of state gray. There is an example of those in your packet. There are some other minor repairs that the applicant will be making while they're doing these roof repairs that do not require historic approval. The staff does recommend approval based of the proposed alterations. Since they are in keeping with the historic nature of the district, proposed style of the building product will maintain the visual relationship in the streetscape, and this alteration does not alter any of the historical or architectural features of this property.
Any questions of staff? Commission will take any action?
Move to approve.
His motion is approved, is support for the motion?
Second.
Mr. McGary, seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next we have a recent application for 22 and a half acres located between State Route 718 and McCagge Road. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. The applicant is Redwood US LLC. The applicant is requesting a zoning amendment for this residential plan development on parcel, which is Park Parcel C06064830. This portion will consist of 22.515 acres and is located, as you mentioned, between State Route 718 and McCagge Road. The applicant's intention is to construct a private residential apartment neighborhood. A map and site plan depicting the proposed layout has been attached, along with attachments from the applicant. There has not been an established city zoning on this property as of yet, since it was recently annexed on May 4th, 2020. The previous zoning classification for this property was under county zoning and was A2 General Agricultural District. The property is currently undeveloped and being used for agricultural purposes. The surrounding area consists of residential uses to the north, a mix of residential and agricultural uses to the south, east, and west. Again, surrounding zonings include A2 General Agricultural in the county, R1 AAA, one-family residential, also county, I2 General Industrial, which is a county zoning, and then R1C, Single Family Residential, which is also a county zoning to the south, and then R4 Single Family, which is City of Troy to the north. The requests for the planned development zoning was submitted of this general plan, which is the first step of the approval process. The development role will require a final development plan and a record plan in order to create the development and to dedicate public utilities. In this case, it is a single-phase development. Detailed engineering drawings will be required to be submitted for review and approval by the development and engineering staff. The record plan will be reviewed by you, the planning commission, will make a recommendation to city council, and council ultimately will have the final approval on the, on the record plan. Attached in this application and packet explains the proposed request. As far as the city checks, roadways, the streets within this development will be private, maintenance of these private streets will be the responsibility of the property owner. Utilities, these, the development will be served by city water and sewer. Plan also seeks to mitigate stormwater control by using a retention pond. Again, maintenance of these private utilities and stormwater control facilities will be the responsibility of the private property owner. For the parks and rec facilities, the developer is not proposing to provide any parkland within the subdivision. The development will only have a covered shelter at the retention pond connected with a walking path to nearby parking areas. The site has been designed to provide 23%, or 5.2 acres total of green space within the development. The site has, I'm sorry, the developer has prepared to pay leasing fees in lieu of a parkland instead of providing the required 3% out of the subdivision regulations, or the 10% of open space required through the zoning ordinance. This development has not met the open space requirement for the planned development as defined by the ordinance. However, maintenance of the private property and pond will be the responsibility of the private property owner. For protective covenants, the applicant does not provide a set of covenants and restrictions. This is going to be a privately managed development with staff on-site with a leasing office. Therefore, they are able to manage the facility through their own regulations and management. Housing values, based on the estimated lease price, we were given about $1,200 to $1,800 a month for these units. As far as the comprehensive plan, our plan states that a mixture of residential units and densities under the planned development district is desired. Planned developments encourage, as a flexible tool, to meet the community's gross density needs while providing creative site development plans with mix of housing types, densities, and values within individual developments. Future residential development should be commensurate with the changing needs of the Troy community, as reflected in the comp plan, and this plan does provide a different type of housing density that may contribute to the housing goals within the comp plan. As far as the standards are concerned, the general plan, this, this plan actually does adhere to the future land, land use map of the comprehensive plan. The conventional zoning is just, but as the development will fill a need for this style of development within the city. The general plan is, is compatible with all the characteristics for the location, topographic, and characteristics of the site. Proposed PD will create a positive effect for the neighborhood and community. The recent market study shows the need for senior living facilities, apartment-style living, and the ability to accommodate the need for alternative developments than traditional single-family dwellings. The general plan is capable of implementation by a final development plan. The proposed PD can and will be served by city water and sewer, and all public services can be provided with the proposed zoning area. The property is surrounded by developed lands in the north, a mix of agricultural and residential to the east, south, and west. The only other land that holds a proposed PD zoning district designation in this vicinity is the subdivision of Stonebridge Meadows, just down the road. And that subdivision is a single-family, traditional-built subdivision. Staff does recommend, a positive recommendation to city council to approve this request for a planned development residential zoning subject to the following conditions of the general plan: that the applicant is given a positive recognition from the park board for fees in lieu of parkland, that a statement be placed on all plans indicating all streets and utilities on the site will be private and maintained by the property owner, and all road names are to be approved by the city engineer.
This is basically going to be a private development. Are the streets wide enough to accommodate fire engines, garbage trucks, and things of that nature?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. When the applicant submitted originally, we sent it immediately over to engineering and held a internal staff meeting to review all of that prior to bringing it, bringing it, bringing it to the planning commission. We also got feedback and sent the feedback to the developer, which modified their plans to show in the packet, the turning ratios for the fire engines. The streets are wide enough. They do meet the fire code. They are going to provide some on just off-street parking and visitor parking stalls as well as driveways. And we'll have no parking signs posted through the remainder of those streets.
Is the city going to be providing trash and recycling?
No, sir. All that will be privately maintained.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Robert, I have a question. All the landscaping, is that by individual? Well, I guess they're all rentals. Does the owner, does Redwoods do all the landscaping and all the mowing?
Yes, ma'am. They will maintain everything within the boundaries of the site.
Okay. I went down to Heber Heights and looked at their, the Redwoods apartments down in Heber Heights, and it was a very nice area, so. It was good to see one in person.
Any other comments by commissioners?
Well, we've been approving an awful lot of residential development. And I just wonder if we're maintaining the appropriate or the traditional balance that Troy's had between residential and businesses and particularly industry. I know my philosophy's always been that businesses and industry make the city money. Residents tend to cost the city money, and I just wonder if maybe we're losing the balance that we've had in the past.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, I certainly agree with you in most respects, Mr. Walkie. And I do, in this case as well, with the exception that this does fill a residential niche that we have not been filling for a number of years, and that is the rental market. So as we look at these developments, we look not only to the balance between residential and commercial and industrial, but also the types of residential that we do, that we do have and that we do need. The other thing that I would mention is that while if you look at each sector separately, it may be true that residential standing alone may cost, cost more or cost rather than be a net gain in terms of income to the city. We do need to recall that the residential that we bring to the city also, we hope, supports workforce that then can feed into our industrial and commercial base. And knowing that our industrial and commercial base, particularly our industrial base, has for the last several months, if not years, needed workforce growth. We think that this being a high-density, private development that will not rely as heavily on city services and costs than our standard developments, particularly subdivisions, that this does provide a supply to the work of workforce to our, or could provide a supply of workforce to our industry that we continue to need and continue to want to circulate.
I agree with Mr. Titterington to the extent that I think this is a need that the city has for good rental locations. I am disappointed, and what I don't like about this application is the statement in the staff report indicating that the zoning code requires 10% of the entire acreage in the planned development to be used as open space, and this does not do that. I believe that if that's the case, that this would be too dense. I don't like the looks of rental properties, one right next to another without open space in between. And for that purpose, I don't like the application unless it comes back to us with a 10% in open space. It's my thoughts. Any other comments?
Well, if I can, I can tell you from the staff point, we did have that concern to discuss with Mr. Foley and Mr. Thurman, our thoughts on that. And as Robert spoke, they were willing to pay fees in lieu of for each individual building lot. So there was 26 buildings on there, $500 apiece would be $13,000 going back in lieu of that parkland. While it may not be as aesthetically friendly as you would like in the open space, we were trying to maximize the use of the apartment space. Because for us, the one thing that this does, it doesn't really affect any established housing districts around it. Right now, across the street, you kind of have an open pond and then a recycling center. And then to the back, it's bounded by McCade and Finner Road. So a lot of the negativity we get when trying to find places for apartment complexes is where it affects people and it's really not in their backyard, which we hear a lot. And this lot actually accomplishes both of those. So we were willing to forego that open space requirement with the fees in lieu of for that reason.
Yeah, I don't mind the fees in lieu, speaking as a park board member, I don't mind fees in lieu. I believe a park in the private area would be a wise decision, but I am still concerned about the density. The, has the, this owner also owns 20 acres right next to this. Has there been any talk about what they're going to use that for?
No. The schools had an option on that property, and that the thought would be when the school built a new school, they would put in a playground in that area. But we can't really count on that at this point in time just because of the way the levy fell.
Redwood doesn't own that.
Yeah, and Redwood does not own it. It was.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Mark Ferguson wanted to correct.
And Mr. Cappers, just to follow up on your land, your open space percentage. This is not the only one that we've approved with less than the 10% as long as they instead provided the payment in lieu of. So that's where the balance comes in. Is that correct?
Correct. And just to clarify, that they don't meet our ordinance definition of open space. They are providing 23% of this site for 5.2 acres of the 22 acres for green space. They, they have tried to allow open space and, or not open space, but green space per our ordinance definitions within the buildings and around those buildings to give areas for the residents to enjoy along with providing the 30-foot buffers along the, along the sides. And again, additional landscape.
How much of that 23% is the retention pond?
Which is. Probably under an acre. I didn't get a full calculation from them yet, but it's probably around an acre or under.
And so our code requires if the detention pond was built above the requirements, then we would have the obligation to count that as open space. Because we felt it met the requirements but wasn't exactly overextending itself. They did put a walking trail around it for the residents, but we did not count that in the open space requirements because we didn't feel that the utility pond was large enough.
Any other comments or questions of staff?
I have a question about traffic. Have you looked at the additional traffic on those two roads? Does that not come to a, don't those two roads come together at a funny corner at the elementary school?
Yes, ma'am, they do. And that was one of the things that we immediately, one of the reasons why we immediately included engineering in the review, not only for the stormwater portion of it, but for traffic. The developer is willing to do the necessary road improvements that the city is asking along McCade. There will be some improvements along 718, but most of those will be done along McCade since that's the more pedestrian and heavily traveled road. There will be some widening sidewalks and everything for that. So that has been addressed and our engineering department has signed off on that.
Thank you.
I have another, another comment. The space just, I think it's west, it's north on this map, but I think it's to the west of this property, is known to flood. And I know engineering has looked at that. How is the flooding to be mitigated in this area?
That, that was one of the primary concerns with, again, that first review, and that's why this agenda was, or this item was moved to this agenda. It was for further staff review and for the applicant to review with their engineers about the stormwater. They've done extensive research with the field tile through that property. They are aware that the school could potentially develop the property to the west, which is where most of that flooding occurs. It's not really on this parcel. But they are going to be bringing indoor, they're going to engineer the site to where they are able to accept stormwater and mitigate the stormwater that they produce from their previous surfaces into the stormwater retention pond and then down the system line.
Is any of the stormwater being drained off to the west? Any other? Do you know what I mean? Is it, is it being drained off or run off to exit this property?
Their pond was sized to maintain the developments, so nothing will be run off on two neighboring properties.
Okay.
Yeah, making the works, it should actually improve drainage because right now it's just a field. With no drainage requirement.
Any other questions or comments? The first matter is whether or not we want to have a public hearing on this matter.
I will make a motion that we not have a public hearing on this matter.
Is there support for that motion?
Is this because, this is because city council will be required to have a hearing?
Yes.
I will second that then.
Your sentence, that's fine. Okay, any discussion on this matter? Okay, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes means not having a public hearing.
That's correct. Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Motion is passed. No public hearing.
Next, we consider the application itself. The commission want to take any action?
Move to approve.
It's a motion to approve.
So recommendation to council. Right.
Mayor?
Say that again.
This is a recommendation to council that you're asking for?
Yes.
Recommendation?
Yes.
And does that include the conditions that staff has recommended?
I would think so.
Yes. You made the motion, so.
Yes, with those recommendations.
Those conditions. I'll second that.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
No.
Motion is adopted. Recommendation to council approved.
Does staff have any other matters to come before the commission?
Nothing to come before the commission. I do have a question if I could. I know we voted on it already going back to the minutes. I just want to make sure that Sue and I are clear, I guess me more specifically, going back to the motion from the last meeting. What exactly is the motion going to state? We talked about different things. You said, well, is the motion going to be, most was made by Mr. Westmeyer, seconded by Mr. Titterington to approve the request as submitted. Because I was under the impression that when recommendations were made by the staff, when planning commission made the recommendations, it was, it was with the staff recommendations. Is that not the case?
I believe that we talked about the motion was for the purpose of approving the demolition as presented in the application.
Okay, but it is not going to be based upon the findings of staff?
Well, I don't think we can say that because that wasn't in the motion.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear when we redo the minutes that we get it correct or show it correctly in the minute. So I just wanted that clarification.
Okay.
So I do remember that we, we talked about, because Ed and I kind of went back and just to clarify that we, we were making a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness. That's why I looked at whatever that word was that ended up being on there. I know we did not list all of the bullet points, but it was approving the certificate of appropriateness to demolish the property. So I think if we stopped right before we got to the bullet points on the minutes and correct that one word, so it says appropriateness, I think that reflects what we did.
Mr. Westmeyer, you concur?
I agree with that, yes.
Okay, that's fine. So the minutes will be amended accordingly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If you don't have any other matters, I'd like to bring to the commission's attention a discussion item. And that's just, you know, we had four requests from historic district applications today. And we received some criticism at this last meeting and the meeting before that for the actions that we take or do not take on historic district applications. Either, you know, we, we say, hey, listen, this shade of red isn't good enough for us, or that color of roofing isn't good enough for us, or something along those lines. Does everybody around the table or around the virtual tables here still believe that historic district is applicable in the city of Troy?
You broke up, repeat that statement.
Does everybody still believe that we need a historic district? Do we, do we take a look at this point and say, okay, there's enough, enough situations that arise that private property items are more important for citizens than the overall historic district is? Do we believe that the downtown is relying upon the Southwest Historic District for its viability? I'm just raising the question because.
Sure. Just to, just to clarify your question, Mr. Cappers, because the Southwest Historic District is a neighborhood within the historic district. So the historic district is, is the whole historic district.
I see.
I will weigh in and say that I think it's a vital part of Troy and that we should continue to have a historic district designation.
Good. Anybody else have any thoughts of that?
Well, I don't, I don't have any problem with continuing with a historic district. I think it's good to preserve the historic nature of it. And I remember we had a consultant that was going to tell us how to improve our process, and my question to them was, show us a city that does it better. And I don't remember ever getting an answer to that.
Right.
We found it.
Yeah, we did not find it. As a matter of fact, I think we took it to planning commission, we decided not to have them back for, to finish off the study as they were proposing, so.
Okay. Hearing no objections to it, I just raised the issue because of the criticisms we were getting on that topic. So that being said, we'll keep on, keep it on. Are there any other issues that planning commission members want to raise? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, if they ever signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, everybody.